Good afternoon, thank you for being here. And City Hall, the May 13, 2019 City Council meeting will come to order. It's 2:00 PM. I'm Bruce Harrell, President of the Council. The Clerk, please call the roll.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Pacheco.
Here.
Sawant.
Here.
Bagshaw.
Here.
Harrell.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll move to adopt the introduction referral calendar. I do have an amendment I'd like to make. I'd like to amend the proposed introduction referral calendar by amending item 2, which is Council Bill 119515, by deleting Councilman, the name Juarez, by adding Herbold as a sponsor of the bill. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second and to basically correct the typographical error that was made. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. So at this point, I will formally move to amend the proposed introduction referral calendar as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The calendar is adopted as amended. There's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Here, no objection, today's agenda is adopted. The minutes of the April 22nd and 29th, 2019 City Council meetings have been reviewed, and if there's no objection, the minutes will be signed. No objection, the minutes are being signed. Presentations, I'm not aware of any presentations this afternoon. So we'll move to public comment on item that appear, appears on today's agenda, the introduction referral calendar, or our 2019 work program. I'll call you out in the order that you've signed up. We'll start off with Mr. David Haynes, followed by Troy Schroder.
Good afternoon. This is regarding ordinance 119509. In order to solve the low acuity problems the fire department is faced with, the City Council is gonna have to face the facts that indeed their policies have imploded society, and despite the demands of City Council, the silent police about their hands being tied, the City Council has been a supporter of policies that literally exempt the low level drug pushers who are low dollar amounts listed nonviolent from jail. This literally has resulted in cops refusing to go after the drug pushers, resulting in a societal implosion, all because City Council signed off on a sabotaged police reform they willingly deceive about. Couple the fact that low level drug pushers are exempted from jail and deportation with malt liquor that should be prohibited for being an artificially fake beer, whose taxes literally pay cops overtime, has resulted in an open container policy like society we're living in, as if we're in Vegas, with the added convenience for criminals to sell three grams of crack, three grams of meth, and three grams of heroin to those saturated in malt liquor, because cops would rather do homeless sweeps and work overtime at sports games, or corral peace-seeking activists, or worse, moonlight for private-financed overtime protecting bars in Belltown as crack operations take over the Catholic housing services building at Piquita Gardens due to cops' refusal to address real crime, only focusing on revenue generating and out-of-sight, out-of-mind perceptions of a rich and successful city. City Council should take a sober look at their policies of appeasement to certain political activists and lobbyists who benefit from a bunch of addicts used by college pukes issuing alternative drool drugs, propping up dilapidated real estate working a pay plan off the demise of society implosion, because Seattle Council is allowing police to get away with a racist agenda. In order to make the integrated system work, you still have to hold the social welfare industry accountable, all of the six-figure salaries.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Our next speakers will be Troy Schroder, followed by Christopher King.
Hi, my name is Troy. I'm here today as a volunteer for United, Unified Seattle, and I'm making this statement today because in no way is enabling an addict to feed their addiction by providing them with needles, or shelving someone in a shack without any opportunity for sobriety or stability, a way for anyone to overcome homelessness or addiction. Compassion is not making someone move from temporary home to temporary home, with no route to permanent housing. Shelving people in shacks without any form of treatment or rehabilitation is not sharing our humanity. Compassion is helping homeless individuals get back on the right path, where they are no longer saying hello to you from the pavement, but from a place as they can call their own home. Putting someone in a shack without any sort of structure that encourages transition info permanent housing is not going to improve anyone's homeless situation. Encampments or any homeless program that's main objective is not translating homeless individuals into permanent housing is a failure, failure from the start. The Lake Union, failure from the start. The Lake Union encampment in South Lake Union is an example of that type of failure. The encampment is set up in the same structure of its now-closed procedure. Lixon Springs, Lichten Springs, which has already succumbed to its inevitable failure. The Lake Union encampment will be soon to follow, leaving its residents once again without any avenue out of the vicious cycle of homelessness. We need real solutions, not shacks.
Thank you, sir. Following Christopher King will be Marguerite Richard.
I have copies for everyone. Great day, folks. I remember the day that I trusted the press in this town, and I trusted you guys on crime and homelessness.
Mr. King, we'll start your time, overstarts. Can you talk to one of the mics so you're right in the middle?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Very good. Take that one. Great. May it please the Council, I remember the day that I trusted the press in this town, and I trusted you guys on crime and homelessness, and helping Seattle homeowners. Nick LaCotta and Shama Sawant acknowledged the bank's criminal activity against homeowners, and I made videos of her first campaign for free. I made a video with Mike O'Brien and the man who got his ear bit knocked at the park. I thought it was an anomaly. It's not. Now, some of you and other candidates attended a forum I co-hosted with Michelle Darnell and SAFE about helping homeowners on mortgages because I was a closing attorney. I ran a title company, and Michelle is one heck of a paralegal. We worked on homeowner mediations together. I thought you guys cared. Well, then there was Ed Murray, but let's move along. Okay. Well, since then, you ignored your own paid consultant about suing mortgage electronic registration services, and Tim Burgess, in my opinion, the slimiest politician I've ever met, summarily shut her down, even though counties in Oregon have successfully sued MERS. And I leaked the audit when you were slow to produce it, and I successfully sued you to get the documents as to why you didn't sue MERS in the first place. And all I got was a bunch of redactions. Okay? And the homeless problem continues unabated, with homeless folks being shuffled around town, back and forth, the same spots they occupied the last month. Okay? And they're either being abused, sexually some of them, used for money, or committing crimes themselves. Remember the Volkswagen rape? Yeah. Well, she's a friend of mine. And you have no clue, or any plan, what to do whatsoever. Everywhere we go, we are under siege in this town, and you are completely feckless in this whole endeavor. All right? Now, I'm at King Cast Mortgage Movies, Chris King's First Amendment page, for those of you on TV who can't find me, because you won't find me through traditional press, because they won't talk about these issues. Let's get in the car. Get in the car. This is what it's about. Seattle City Council is to blame for a lot of it. Seattle City Council, whatever you're doing with the homeless situation is not working still.
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you for your testimony. We'll move to...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marguerite Richard.
I'm here because I'm a person that was born and raised in Seattle, and I feel like my rights are being violated. And I think anybody that is familiar with Jim Crow and the things that happened during Jim Crow should have a clear understanding that Jim Crow and his imps are still lingering in our black community. So I'm insulted when I come down here, because I feel like you're allowing people to develop an inferior, inferiority complex. And I'm not inferior. Like I said, when your time is up, you're going right back out to the community before you came down here. So that's why you don't mean anything to me. Okay? Because all it is is a title, but it's not a title to infringe on my human rights and my civil rights. You don't have that right. And so we're still, way back 10 years, maybe 400 years or more, about the destitute that happened, because people such as yourself did not listen to the plight of today and what was happening to humanity then. So we speeded it up in this 2019, and then you flipping the script and throwing people out, because you want to hear what you want to hear, but people are just people, and they're gonna speak according to what they feel is in their heart to speak. So this stuff that's going on up in here, I don't understand it. And I've been begging you and pleading with you to help me to understand it. Okay? Because we did have a shooting over there, and I think I can't, I'm gonna talk about the Central District, I don't have, but I put it on Mr. Sawant's mind on tomorrow, since my time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Our last speaker is the Honorable Michael Fuller, SUI Juris.
Yes, I'm Honorable Michael Fuller. I'm devastated with this denying of y'all. I tried to decrease homelessness, but what y'all Democrats do, turn around and increase homelessness. And now I'm looking at all of these shootings that's happening, but you have the audacity and the gumption to pay unauthorized undocumented aliens in the state of Washington and Seattle, Washington, which violates RCW 2.48.210, your oath on admission, RCW 2.24.020, your oath and RCW 2.40.080, your oath of office, and 98.36.080 malicious harassment, and 42.52020, meaning activities incompatible with public duty, and 49.60.30, freedom from discrimination. Organized crime control like October 15, 1970, that was signed by Richard Nixon. Crime control like August 24, 1954, that was signed by President Dwight Eisenhower. Joan versus Martin Company, 1960, June and 1968, both are meaning white citizens to drive black citizens out of their community in the city on 23th and Union. Bruce Harrell, Chinatown need a tank at the time of war.
Thank you, sir.
I was devastated in you, Bruce Harrell.
Thank you, Honorable.
Hey, I'm trying to put y'all in...
Okay, so your time's running out, sir.
I know the laws like y'all know the laws.
Thank you very much, Honorable.
And I've got brains that...
Okay, thank you very much, sir. So that'll end our public comment section, and we'll move to the payment of the bills section. Please read the title.
Council Bill 119514, a property management pays out in claims and ordering the payment thereof.
Okay, I'll move to pass Council Bill 119514. Moved to second, the bill passed. Any further comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Pacheco.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passed in the Sheriff's Senate. Please read the first agenda item.
The report of the Gender Equity Safe Communities New Americans and Education Committee Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119509 relating to a mobile integrated health pilot, amending ordinance 125724, which adopted the 2019 budget, changing appropriations to various departments and budget control levels, lifting a proviso, and rightfully confirming certain priorities. The committee recommends the pass as amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. I'm gonna go ahead and describe the bill that full council will consider today, and then I will hand it over to Councilmember Bagshaw, who is the prime sponsor of this effort. Council Bill 119509 amends the 2019 adopted budget by lifting a proviso on $475,000 held in Finance General and appropriating those funds to the Seattle Fire Department for the purpose of implementing the Mobile Integrated Health Unit Pilot Program. These funds were originally provisoed and held in Finance General Reserve in accordance with Green Sheet 13-40-A-3. This green sheet was sponsored by Councilmember Bagshaw, who has been advocating for the piloting of this program for several years, and for that, we really want to thank her. Councilmember Bagshaw's green sheet directed the Executive to develop and report back to the council on the implementation plan for this proposed pilot program. And last week, on May 8th, my committee received a briefing on that proposed plan. This council bill allows the Seattle Fire Department to operationalize the Mobile Integrated Health Unit by the third quarter of this year 2019. The unit will be comprised of two firefighter EMTs and one social worker or mental health professional. The unit will operate primarily in the urban core and is intended to reduce the low acuity call volume and preserve 911 services while better meeting the needs of 911 callers. The Executive and the Seattle Fire Department studied similar models in other jurisdictions, both locally and nationally, and coordinated with the Seattle Police Department, the Human Services Department, and the Seattle King County Public Health Agency in developing the implementation plan for this pilot program. The bill was amended in my committee to add additional layers to data collection and reporting requirements. The base bill came already with requirements around data collection, evaluation, and reporting. I advanced through committee a particular amendment that would ensure that the Seattle Fire Department, as part of the overall evaluation, would develop, evaluate additional measures that might help the city determine if the pilot program, as we take it to scale, should be modified to include, not supplant firefighters and EMTs, or the social workers, or behavioral health professionals, but to add to those services by including a registered nurse, nurse practitioner, or physician's assistant, who could provide onsite immediate care in the event that that is needed. These measures would evaluate whether a low-acuity patient could have benefited from infield care, as I just mentioned, and treatment, including suturing of minor wounds, the prescribing of pain relief medication, and onsite psychosocial assessment. This infield treatment model exists in LA, as well as Kent, Washington, and our central staff analyst Greg Doss has communicated with those jurisdictions regarding their operations, which is why I advanced that particular amendment. It's a wait-and-see, study, evaluate, and see how and if the pilot program could be modified in the future. Again, not by replacing the firefighter EMTs and the social worker, mental health professional that'll already be on the unit, but to add to the suite of services that those individuals might already be providing. So that is the amended version of the bill that is in front of us for consideration at committee, and with, I was really excited to have the committee unanimously recommend that the City Council adopt Council Bill 119509 as amended.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, I really appreciated just what you had to say. Councilmember Herbold, I appreciated your write-up. I saw the email that you had sent, and I really want to acknowledge Chief Scoggins and John Ehrenfeld from the downtown local offices of our Seattle Fire Department, and recognize what the mayor has done as well, pulling together not only the Fire Department, but Police Department, our Human Services Department, and also working closely with Public Health, and of course, with our Budget Office, to make sure we stay within budget. But this is such an important step in the right direction. As Councilmember Gonzalez has stated, we reach to other cities, not just LA, but Mesa, Arizona, Colorado Springs, Colorado, to learn, and our own Kent, Washington have done projects like this. We know that the kinds of complaints that our firefighters routinely respond to are not the high-acuity ones for which they have been trained, such as a fire, or a traffic accident, or the kinds of things where it requires fast action and quick decision-making. Many of the complaints, in fact, I believe that the fire chief had said a good 40% of the responses that they are sent out to with ladder trucks, sometimes two ladder trucks, sometimes two ladder trucks, plus an ambulance, a medic one, plus police officers, are really for people that have perhaps their minor injury or illness, like, it's really more of a social issue. They're feeling cold, they're feeling lonely, they're feeling abandoned, they don't have the support around them that they need, but they certainly don't need 12 people responding to a 911 call. So this pilot proposal, it's what we started off calling a Mobile Integrated Health Unit, now we're calling it Health One. I love that title, because it's something we all can remember. It does build on national and regional examples, but it's also capitalizing on our fire department's core strengths with having immediate response, flexible decision-making, they'll be adaptable onsite, it's really a team-based work, and it's going to provide improved patient experience for the individuals who are on our sidewalks and calling or inside a facility and needing help, but it also will provide some support for our fire department, that they're not going to have to respond with eight people, and certainly, the taxpayers are going to have an opportunity to see their money used wisely as well. So I think that this is a triple win. I'm very pleased that we've gotten there. I'm glad the way we had $475,000 that we put in the budget last year, but also, we are coordinating with Ally Franklin in our, our community connections in Northgate, and I also want to acknowledge Sue McLaughlin and the work that her group is doing around healthier here. All this connects, and I'm very thankful and appreciative of the amended language going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw. Councilmember Gonzalez.
I thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw, for those remarks in sort of the broader framing, besides the granular detail of the actual legislation. I failed to mention one small thing, which is that the proviso is on $475,000 in our budget. We have heard from the Executive, both in committee and, and in media reports, that the total cost of this initial pilot project is actually $500,000. Again, only $475,000 is subject to a proviso. In committee, Chief Scoggins mentioned to us that the delta of $25,000 is coming from surplus in the Fire Department, so there will not be a gap, and wanted to make sure that council members understood that, that there is a disparity in terms of the $475 versus the $500,000 cost that has been estimated by the Executive, but it's our understanding that that $25,000 difference will be achievable for the department without a huge inconvenience to them or the general fund.
Very good. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I just want to also put this in, in even broader context of resources for the Fire Department generally. The need to respond to emergency calls is a big driver of their budget, and historically, best practices were that when they, when responses to individual units replaced $3,500 a year, they would look at adding additional resources, whereas what we're seeing now is that individual units have four, five, six, seven thousand annual responses for individual units, and this, again, this, this effort, I think, is within the context of trying to address that large volume of emergency responses that they're dealing with.
Very good. Thanks for the comments. I think we're ready to proceed. Okay. If there's no further comments, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Pacheco.
Aye.
Sawant.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passed in the Sheriff's Senate. Please read the next agenda item.
The report of the Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119496, authorized in Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement with the Seattle Academy of Arts and Sciences to renovate the South Park Community Center site and develop an ongoing relationship in the South Park community consistent with the terms of agreement in attachment one. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Okay, so, Councilmember Herbold, would you like to amend it first?
Well, thank you for the prompt. I would. I would move to amend Council Bill 119496 by substitutes, by substituting version 2 for version 1 of the bill, and substituting version 3 for version 2 of the attachment 1.
Second.
Okay, explain to us the amendments.
So, the proposed substitute version 2, as it relates specifically to the bill, adds the following language to Page 2, line 12 through 13, stating that Department of Parks and Rec shall submit the final draft agreement for review to the City Council Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee. The goal of this amendment is to provide council with an opportunity to review the final agreement between Parks and the Seattle Arts and Sciences Academy, and we really appreciate that they are working together to establish this partnership, but the amendment provides an additional opportunity for council to gain a better understanding of the terms of the agreement before it's signed. The second element of the substitute relates specifically to the terms of agreement as it relates to the field programming section, and it provides greater clarity by noting that drop-in time is, is available for community members generally in programming for South Park, but explicitly noting that a process should be developed for field scheduling at the, at the South Park Community Center that prioritizes South Park community members. So generally, citywide, the field is available for drop-in time, that does not need to be reserved, but we want to also lift up the ability of South Park residents to reserve the, the field, to take priority over the general community citywide. Requesting this clarity is designed specifically to distinguish between the academy's fall and spring sports scheduling, so that benefits to the South Park community members are explicitly provided in the agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Before we turn the base legislation over to Councilmember Juarez and vote on the amendment, Councilmember Juarez, did you have anything to say about the amendment?
I do not.
We're good? Okay. Any questions on the amendment? Councilmember Bagshaw.
Councilmember Herbold, you touched on this a little bit, but in our committee last week, I'm not sure that we talked about the organizations coming back and approving the additional 25 to 50 hours and so on, so do we have everybody sign off?
Yep, we have worked together on this one, and I just covered the items that I had lifted forward. Councilmember Gonzalez can talk about the others.
Great.
Sure, and I'm happy to do that.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. So, a few things that I lifted up in committee, gosh, was that last week already?
Uh-uh.
Last week, were a couple of points. One was around getting clarity around when the, when SAS would have priority on scheduling on the field. So I appreciate having an opportunity to work through the Parks Department with SAS, and much thanks to Tracy Ratcliffe from Council Central Staff on shepherding this through. We were able to achieve some clarification on precisely when, between August and November, and again, between March and the rest of the, and May, we would actually see hours prioritized for SAS. So the original language only said fall and spring, and we now have defined dates by agreement with SAS, that, that the intended prioritization of the field for SAS would be the last week of August to the second week of November, otherwise known as fall, and the first week of March to third week in May or spring. So that's one point. The second point is that we also requested that the Department of Parks and Recreation provide us an annual report on the use of the new field by the community and by SAS for the first two years after completion of the field, so that we can, we can better understand as policymakers the demand for the field and where the demand is coming from. The second, the third component that we were able to receive clarity on were the number of hours that would be committed to programming at the South Park Community Center, or working with local schools, or local nonprofits provided by SAS. So I really want to thank them for wanting to contribute back into community in this, in this manner. Originally, they had proposed a minimum of 25 hours. I received correspondence from folks at SAS after that committee hearing, saying that that is absolutely a minimum, but they hope to be able to accomplish more and give more hours. I proposed a 50-hour minimum rather than a 25-hour minimum, in the spirit of their verbal commitment that they actually wanted to do more than 25 hours. They, they very quickly and graciously agreed to 50-hour as a minimum, so that is a consensus proposal there on the minimum number of hours. I also asked them to just include a little bit more texture as to what... I also asked them to just include a little bit more texture as to what programming they're referring to, since the language is pretty broad, and that's why we see language that specifically lists but doesn't limit it to things like soccer camps, after-school student tutoring, mentorship programming, robotics and arts programs. It's my understanding that SAS will continue to work with the South Park community to identify what kind of programming they actually want to see in community as part of, part and parcel of what flows from this public-private agreement around the athletic field. So to answer your question, Councilmember Bagshaw, this has all been agreed to, and I really want to thank the folks at SAS and DPR for their ongoing partnership and cooperation with me in addressing some of the concerns that I raised in committee last week.
Okay, so we're going to vote on just the amendment, which was basically a substitution of version two for version one, and substituting version three for version two of the attachment on attachment one. So any other questions on that? All those in favor of the amendment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The bill is amended. Councilmember Juarez, would you like to speak to the amended bill?
Yes, I will. Thank you. I want to give a little, put this in context for the viewing public, even though we all are familiar with District 1, West Seattle. South Park is a neighborhood in Seattle that is in Seattle's District Number 1, south of Georgetown, across the Duwamish River, and north of Tukwila. It's home to the South Park Community Center, which serves many families and youth sports from neighboring parts of Seattle, including the Seattle Academy of Arts and Sciences, a school with 6th to 12th grade students that actively participate in the athletic sports. However, the South Park community has the highest youth population of any Seattle neighborhood, yet its residents have about 1/10 of the accessible green space available to the average King County resident. A concept design informed by community input was finalized in spring 2018 to install and relocate a play area and other amenities, including landscaping, to mitigate negative health impacts from SR, State Route 99, which runs next to the park area. This design is projected to be $9.8 million. The $9.8 million is a combination of four funding sources, the majority coming from the Seattle Academy of Arts and Sciences. It includes $1.2 million from the state and county grants, $2.8 million in park district funding, $1.8 million in REIT funding, and of course, the $4 million donation from Seattle Academy of Arts and Sciences. This ordinance will allow the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement with the Seattle Academy per the term sheet as listed in Attachment 1, and enable the Seattle Academy to begin fundraising for the South Park Community Center site redevelopment. The bill was heard in the Civic Development, Public Assets, and Native Communities Committee with the pass recommendation with the expectation that members could spend an extra week before council's final vote to clarify aspects of the agreement. The agreement is 25 years long with two five-year extensions. I want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez and Herbl for strengthening it with their amendments. Councilmember Gonzalez's amendments, as you heard her share, focus in on field programming, and I want to thank Councilmember Herbl, because she focused in on one of my passions, the public benefits piece, that is, the program expansion and provide greater access for local residents to South Park and their neighborhoods. And with that, Council President Harrell, I would ask that the ordinance pass as amended.
Thank you very much. Any closing comments or questions on the bill? Okay, if not, please call the roll on the passage of the amended bill.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbl.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Pacheco.
Aye.
Sawat.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Eight in favor and unopposed.
The bill passed in the Sheriff's Senate. Please read Items 3 through 8.
The report of the Systemic Development and Transportation Committee, Agenda Items 3 through 8, appointments 1318 through 1323, reappointment of Crystal Pfizer as member Seattle Freight Advisory Board for term to December 31, 2019, and appointments and reappointments of Krista Buck, Jeanne Akudanza, Mike Elliott, and Johann Helman as member Seattle Freight Advisory Board for term to May 31, 2020, and appointment of John Persak as member Seattle Freight Advisory Board for term to May 31, 2021. The committee recommends all these appointments be confirmed.
Thank you very much. Councilmember O'Brien.
So this mix of appointments and reappointments, great group of folks willing to serve on the Freight Advisory Board. Really quickly, Crystal is the Director of State Affairs for UPS, United Parcel Service. She's a reappointment. Chris is a new appointment. He's a business agent for Teamsters Local 174. Previous, prior to that, he served as, worked as 10 years as a package driver for UPS. Jeanne's a reappointment, founder of a transportation consulting firm. Mike's a reappointment, an expert on rail safety. He chaired the Washington State Legislative Board of the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers and Trainmen. Another reappointment, Johann is the Regional VP at Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, formerly the Executive Director of State Governor Affairs at BNSF. And finally, John Persak, I think many of you know, he is a longshoreman and officer with ILWU, Local 19, and a lot of expertise on freight movement in and around the port.
Thank you, Councilmember Brian. Any questions or comments on these appointments? If not, those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and appointments are confirmed. Please read Items 9 and 10.
Agenda Items 9 and 10, appointment 1324 and 1325, reappointment of Hester Saraband as member Levy to Move Seattle Oversight Committee for term to December 31, 2022, and appointment of Inga Meskov as member Levy to Move Seattle Oversight Committee for term to December 31, 2019. The committee recommends these appointments be confirmed.
Councilmember Pacheco. I'm just making sure you're paying attention. Councilmember O'Brien.
So mean.
Okay, this is how we're rolling now at the City Council. Really quickly, Hester is the Policy Director at Transportation and Choices Coalition. She's also a member of the Washington State Transportation Commission. Inga's day job is a hospital administrator for adolescent medicine at University of Washington School of Medicine, recently completed a four-year term as the president of the Ravenna Bryant Community. Both, Hester's a reappointment, Inga's a new appointment, both will make great additions to the Levy Oversight Committee.
Very good. Any questions or comments on these appointments? If not, those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and appointments are confirmed. Is there any further business coming for the council?
Ooh, nice.
I'd like to move to be excused on July 1.
Second.
It moved to second, and the Councilmember Harrell is excused July 1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business coming for the council? If not, we stand adjourned, and everyone have a great rest of the afternoon.
Thank you. They always tell me I can't vote.